Good evening, everybody. Calling the Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session into order. The time is 6:01 on Tuesday, September 25th. Welcome to City Council this evening. Kirk, do you want to go ahead and do a roll call?
Yep, Mr. Allitt.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Just wanted to make a note for the record that Council President Williams is excused tonight. She's actually in the Lehigh Valley. Unfortunately, her granddaughter was in an accident last week where she was severely burned, so she's attending to family needs tonight. So I just wanted to make that known on record, that this is certainly an excuse absence for her. I'll turn it over to Councilman Western Majors for an invocation.
And on that note, I just ask that we all take a moment of silence for President Williams' granddaughter Tatiana, who is in the burn unit at Lehigh Valley and recovering. Just ask for a speedy recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. Move over to Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Asha Green.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Communications, there is none. Moving on to Courtesy of the Floor, I will start with my right. If you want to come to the microphone.
I'm Dave Schuman. Really grateful and thankful that I'm back to come to some more of the meetings because there's things that I've been cleaning up to take care of, and I'll be prepared for the near future. I'm really grateful and thank you that going through the Citizens Police Academy, you know, it's been very important. And on my side, it's continuing to go through the crime watch and the safetiness here in Harrisburg. I'm starting to go with the patrol ride. And it's been very important for me to have some more of the information. My next one's going to go into detective. So, you know, I'm really grateful and thankful that we need to continue. And I'm sharing this with a lot of other people because it would be much more important for to have citizens of the police academy that is a very good relationship when you go on a call. And if there's something domestic, if there's children, there's this and that, that, you know, you can sort of play with the kids or keep their attention to. So, thank you.
Thank you. And anyone in the center? Go ahead, if you have the microphone.
I'm a little nervous here.
No problem. Just state your name for the record, too.
Okay. Andrea Sims.
Very good.
Okay. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about myself, okay? Is that okay?
Go for it.
Okay, okay. My name is Andrea Sims. I've lived in Harrisburg over 20-something years. My background is human services. If anyone knows what human services is, is working with individuals with different needs. Poverty, mental health, intellectual disability, a mom that doesn't know how to raise her child, a little bit of everything. And I can remember when I first moved here, I'm an Army brat, so I've been all over the world. I just cried when I was in Harrisburg because I just noticed the spirit of Harrisburg. You know, it's just Spanish people, black people, white people. It was just such a poverty. I was like, what is going on in the city? And I still see it sometimes. And I notice that the black community is the only community that does not come together and work together. Spanish people come together, Dominican people come together, white people come together. But the black community, and that bothers me, you know, because it makes me not want to talk to my people. And I have a lot of knowledge for my people, but they get so stuck up and arrogant, especially the black men. And the women, it takes them a while, but they, you know, they come around. So, I'm just here to bring everybody together, especially the black community, because it's a shame how we don't come together and work together. We get jealous of each other. And I don't even know where that spirit came from. Because when I lived in Germany with my black people, we came together as a team. But when I moved to Harrisburg, I was like, what is this? And when I go to Maryland, Virginia, Philly, it's not like that. But Harrisburg is just terrible. And it's just a shame. You know what I mean? So I want to change that. You know, and black men, they get with white women, and they think they're the shit. And that's not right. Black women work hard, just like black men do. They, you know, they open up the doors for them, you know, buy them flowers. But I see it. I'm like, wow, what about your black woman? So, I'm sorry to go off a tangent, but, you know, I just want to see the black community come together, have businesses, because it's not allowed black people to have businesses in Harrisburg. It's Spanish people, other minorities, and I'm like, what is going on? So I want to bring change. We need change in this city so we can be happy. When I first moved here, you know, we got along. We, you know, they played soul music, Spanish music. We got along, and then things just changed. What happened? I used to have a good time. Now everything is just divided, and it's not fair. But anyway, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to the center? To the left? All right. Oh, did you have any public comment you wanted to make tonight?
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Go right ahead and come to the microphone.
I'd like to back up with what you said.
Just if you could, start with your name for the record as well.
My name is Russell Bluest.
Okay.
I've been coming to this city for 34 years, almost every single day. And I could tell you what it is. I have communication with the black people, the Spanish people, the white people. And everybody wants to stereotype that somehow or another, that black people have less opportunity. That's not true. The opportunity is they're equally, there is no opportunity in the poorer neighborhoods. It's not opportunity for anybody in the schools. There's no trade programs. There's none of that. There's literally nothing there. And to be honest with you, people tell me all the time that I've got to be black because I have tendencies, and they tell me, you have to be black because of the way, you know, I communicate with everybody. And honestly, until we get rid of the hate and the animosity and everything else that the city has and going through here, we're not going to have a city that's going to be a peaceful city. I have property in the 1300 block of Vernon Street.
Right.
If you go down, if every block in the city of Harrisburg was like the 1300 block of Vernon Street, we have white Mennonites, we have black people, we have white people, we have Spanish people. There are no drug dealers in that neighborhood. Now, I sit them streets because I have property down there, and I've got no problems chasing those people away. That's why you don't see them there. And it is a group effort. The community has to work together in order to make a city work. It's not going to work if we stereotype ourselves as, well, I don't even want to mention it because the landlords somehow or another have become the monsters in the group. But everybody wants to say the landlords are this, and the white people are this, and the black people are that. And I've been to meetings where Latinos, they want to help Latinos. And one time at a meeting, I stood up and said, well, I only want to, I thought you guys were helping out white people. And they're like, you're helping out white people? That sounds prejudiced. And I said, I just listened to every single one of you people tell me about how you wanted to help black people, you wanted to help Latinos. But I get up and say about white people, and all of a sudden, and there's nobody else in the city, in these poor neighborhoods, that has any more opportunity. It doesn't matter race, gender, none of that matters. Like, this city lacks opportunity. That's what it lacks. There is no opportunity in the schools. My honest opinion, at this point, the best thing they could do is to close down 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, mandatory homeschooling, and mandatory 20-hour part-time jobs or educational equivalency, and break that cycle that we have in there where we have the gang violence and everything else. But honestly, I really don't see what you see when it comes.
Oh, I see. Trust me.
And I get it.
Excuse me, you guys. Hey, pardon me, pardon me. This isn't really a time for a direct conversation amongst.
I'm working in the community, so I don't see.
So I would say if you have finishing.
The only other question I wanted to ask was, on the Act 47 that's going on, when are the next meetings on the Act 47?
Well, actually, address that. I think, from what I understand right now, we will probably have committee hearings on Act 47, I believe.
October 2nd.
October 2nd.
Okay.
No, that's not the hearing, that's legislative session.
It's the, I mean, it's the next discussion about Act 47 that we're having.
The next discussion will be on October 2nd.
Okay. How do we get information on where this stands for the Act 47?
Well, all meetings are definitely published here on the website, and so...
No, I mean ahead of time. To come to a meeting without knowing what the agenda is?
Yeah, the agendas are posted usually the Friday before, I believe, correct? So you will see that on the website, you'll see the agenda.
Because my honest opinion is, there's only one solution for this Act 47. And the numbers work. And that is a sales tax. A 5% sales tax is what we need to fight for as a community, as city council, as the administration. It's the only thing that makes sense. Do the math, 150,000 $5 transactions comes out to $13.8 million a year. And I'm working with a group out of Philadelphia that has an accountant with it. They have run the numbers that I've, and they're saying that's way low versus, we probably could pull off three cents on a sales tax and literally end up with double or triple that amount of money. Now, I'm not even sure because we're, the $12 million that were supposedly a shortfall, over how many years is that $12 million?
What is he talking about? Yeah, I...
This is something else.
The, if you're talking about the revenue and the shortfall...
Right.
I'm not trying to exactly understand where your question is going to.
Well, the $12 million...
It would be every year if the Elevated Taxing Authority were to disappear, we'd have a deficit every year.
Got you, a shortfall of $12 million. Gotcha, that's where you're going from.
The thing with the, with the, with the sales tax, and this is what, if you people really want to work for the citizens, and the property owners and the investors in this city, we're obviously not going to get a commuter tax. That, they don't want it. They're not going to do it. But those commuters are spending money every single day, from the federal building, the state buildings, the Capitol buildings, they're buying lunches, they're down here partying on the weekends, everything that they got going. If you figure a 3% to 5% sales tax, you're literally looking at revenues somewhere around 25 to 30, $35 million a year in tax revenue. When you spread it out, 25 cents, 50 cents at a time, instead of 9%, this 9% income tax that they're talking about penalizing, like, to me, there's more people that work in the city than there is, well, there's a lot, anyway, but to affect a 9% local tax, I don't even know where we stand with that. That's the last thing I heard. I haven't seen anything, it's hard to get any information out of anybody in here. Everything requires an act of Congress, and you've got to submit write-to-knows and everything else to get information.
All of our agendas are posted the Friday before the Tuesday of our meetings, so you know kind of in order how things go. The 2nd and the 4th Tuesdays of every month are legislative sessions, or typically voting sessions.
Okay.
And the 1st and the 3rd, is that right? Are work sessions where we actually talk through the committee on legislation.
On the Act 47, is there a local community group that has input on that?
Yeah, you can come to any public hearing we have.
I'm talking about, I think what we need to do here, since we're not being able to go anywhere with it, we seem to be standing at a stalemate here. We thought we were, when Mayor Papenfuss ran, we were told that he was bringing us out of this Act 47. And then all of a sudden, we find out they're going to double property taxes because it's an emergency. Now that that didn't happen, now we're looking at a 9%.
I encourage you to come out to the meetings because I think we've been pretty transparent in terms of where things go with it.
Well, is there a way, though, that we can actually get a community committee?
Yes, if you come to the public hearings, you can provide input during a public hearing. So on a work sessions, when we discuss legislation, you're welcome to come out and provide...
But there's no way for the community to have their own little group?
In addition, and sorry, Mr. Vice President, in addition, any community group that wants to have input on Act 47 can get together, basically, the Act 47 plan is online, all the information is available in a public forum, and they can get together and come up with their own ideas and present them to council if that group is so inclined.
Yeah. My main concern is the burden on everybody in this city. The investors, the renters, everybody. The only way to really do it is to spread it out and make everybody pay.
Do you have something new that you want to add?
I'm sorry, but I just want to let you know that I work in the community. I've worked in the community over 20-something years. I've walked these streets, okay? And on Dairy Street, all I see is cockroaches. What's up with that? I'm not used to seeing something like that.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The reality of the public comment is not for in common with each other, it's for council purposes. So feel free to have a conversation, you know, when the meeting's over.
I thought this was an open, you know, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to get off on a tangent.
No problem. Just try to keep the meeting moving along. Is there anyone else who had any public comment? For good of course. All right, moving on. One thing I was remiss to do at the start of the meeting is to announce that we did have an executive session to discuss legal matters at the conclusion of the work session on September 18th. So I just want to make sure that was placed into record. Moving along to approval of the minutes, council members have a chance to approve, review the minutes from the legislative session of September 11th. Any changes, deletions? Hearing none, the minutes will stand as approved. Moving on to reports of the committees. From the work session on September 18th, committee updates from myself, Chair Mattson, and Chair Williams. Due to Chair Williams' absence, she will give her administration meeting updates at the next legislative session, but she did want me to convey particularly that a lot of the discussion in the administration committee meeting was on the appointments to the Environmental Advisory Council, and she is very impressed with the candidates for it and is excited to be able to move forward to vote on that. So that's something she wanted me to convey. Chair Mattson, would you like to give the updates from your work session?
Yes. At our last work session, we discussed Resolution 74. Just went over the Federal Archives Building, the new project proposed. The project was in compliance with all zoning regulations and did pass the Planning Commission as well. Just want to highlight that it's an historic and, I think, an important project moving forward, and I was happy to see that the state decided to, you know, build the new Archives Building within Harrisburg. And I would suggest to all my colleagues, vote for the resolution. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And report from my committee for the Budget and Finance Committee. We had, for discussion, Resolution 72 of 2018, which was a resolution approving the fourth proposed 2018 budget reallocation. Two parts to that reallocation. The one part was dealing with a reimbursement from the fire escrow funds for demolition work done at 1213 Chestnut Street. And the other part of the allocation was to move some funds from salaries and wages that were unused from public safety and apply them to some roof replacement, as well as handling some repairs and some for vehicles, and then also some building maintenance issues. So it was just truing up the budget and rightsizing things from that perspective. And I do encourage my colleagues to go ahead and vote in affirmative for that resolution. Moving on to ordinances for first reading, there are none. Moving on to ordinances for amendment, there are none. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, there are none. And now moving on to resolutions. To start with, Resolutions 48 of 2018, Resolution 49 of 2018, and Resolution 50 of 2018 were all amended to be city council appointments for EAC. So I just want to put that note into record. Kirk, but go ahead with Resolution 48, 2018.
Resolution 48 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Christine M. Proctor to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Any questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, let's vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Resolution 48 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 49.
Resolution 49 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Mattson, and it's a resolution appointing Ms. Tanya A. Dearoff to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's call a vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Resolution 49 passed.
Moving on to Resolution 50.
Resolution 50 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Rafika Mohammed to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, call a vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Resolution 50 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 72.
Resolution 72 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the fourth proposed 2018 budget reallocation.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's call a vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Resolution 72 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 74.
Resolution 74 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Ron Metzler on behalf of the Pennsylvania Department of General Services to construct a new multi-story Pennsylvania State Archives Building.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's call a vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Resolution 74 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 77.
Resolution 77 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution recommending the appointment of Mr. Wayne S. Martin to serve on the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission for a two-year term.
This will be placed in the Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 78.
Resolution 78 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Molly Al-Cheem to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
This will also be placed in the Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 79.
Resolution 79 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Charlie L. White Jr. to serve as a member of the coordinating committee, as an alternate member of the technical committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study.
This will also be placed in the Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 80.
Resolution 80 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Jeffrey Knight to serve on the technical committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study.
This will also be placed in the Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 81.
Resolution 81 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Wayne S. Martin to serve on the coordinating committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study.
And this will also be placed in the Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 82.
Resolution 82 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Melanie G. Cook to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
This will be placed in the Administration Committee. Moving on to old business, starting with my left, anyone, council members? To my right? The only question I have, Mayor, the, I know there was a letter that I think you submitted to Impact Harrisburg regarding funding for a new position. Can you give us some insight as to what that is for, or kind of the direction, or what's that needed? I was confused by what that was regarding.
We sent a letter to Impact Harrisburg asking if they would like to consider the possibility of funding our Director of Community Economic Development position, the position which is now open with the retirement of Jackie Parker. It was our understanding that there is no formal, open grant process for Impact Harrisburg, so they'd have to create one. And it is further understanding that there are some funds still in the account that could be dedicated to economic development. So it was more of a letter of inquiry. If they had responded, or are going to respond, that yes, you should apply, then we would come to council to work on a joint application. But it was simply a letter to determine whether or not we, since there wasn't an open possibility, whether or not we could apply.
And that was funding specifically looking for the 2019, you know, budgetary year? Because I know it's a fully funded position as it stands right now, right?
Yeah, we floated the concept of doing a grant similar to what Credic had done originally for the position whereby funding it maybe for three years, it could theoretically be part of a three-year exit strategy plan. We have not heard back officially from Impact Harrisburg, so if we do hear back, we will, well, we heard back unofficially from Impact Harrisburg.
Well, she's the chair of Impact Harrisburg.
You'd like to speak.
So the board saw it for the first time right before the committee meeting. It was presented, it was presented as, I think, what was intended, to be a request to see whether there'd be an interest. One detail that's missing is part of the Impact or the Harrisburg Strong Plan was there was certain money put in on the economic development and on the infrastructure side for contingency funds. And frankly, the discussion was, were they all, there were contingency funds for the city? And the question was, was there any of that remaining in there? And frankly, because it's been three years since any money was sort of sorted out, the question was, is that money remaining? And that was, they were sorting that out as well, whether that money would be available. And there was some discussion whether it would be for project management type of something, work, you know, in addition to economic development, you know, for the long term, which is a discussion that's sort of been an ongoing discussion in the administration and in the council about project management. But it was, it was an exploratory letter. I will say, I will be frank, that I think some members did not take it as an exploratory letter. But it was written, I think, at the end for Ms. Parker leaving, and she got assistance from, I think, the grants person to help, just how do you formulate a letter for something like this? And it tried to lay out facts as best could be done, and, but it's, from my perspective, as from both hats, it's the opening of a discussion. You know, is this a possibility? There was some pushback that it should come to council first. I frankly will tell you, I don't think that's right. I think that we, funding sources are explored all the time in a discussion mode, and if they're not there, they wouldn't be proposed in a budget. But, so it was discussion to see is there funds that would be available. And I think that will be an ongoing discussion, I think, on both sides.
Okay.
But the request was like $270,000 over three years was what was the ask. Impact Harrisburg right now has about $1.4 million of uncommitted funds. It doesn't have a second round of grant applications at the time. And, you know, and the board is just moving to discussions, you know, as the year winds down, as how to move to the next level, because the final projects, those are finally being awarded and finished. And so, you know, you're seeing how that money plays out in the community, and it's ready to move on to the next stages. So it's part of that discussion.
Okay.
And I'll just say that the reason we sent the letter now is in part because we're preparing a budget proposal for November, and we wanted to know if there would be the possibility of any type of a grant that we could legitimately propose as part of that proposal, or whether or not we're going to need to fund it ourselves via the general fund and some sort of restructure. So that was the immediate timing. And actually, the letter was put together by Ms. Parker before she left, and it seemed like a good thing to explore, given that there are these funds dedicated to economic development.
Okay. Fair enough. Any new business, council members? To my right?
I'm trying to, yeah, I just want to, some of the public comment today, just, we appreciate all the feedback that the community provides to us. just, we appreciate all the feedback that the community provides to us. It's a very useful tool for us as members of council, but also members of the community to hear the concerns that residents have in the city of Harrisburg. But I, I, I think that, I know that the city, we have some issues that we're working to work, to work through and, and deal with, but I still believe fully in the city, that the young people that it, that it puts out, me personally being one of them, who was in the Harrisburg School District. I have three younger brothers that are all products of Harrisburg City Schools, that are all doing very well in their careers. One happens to be a state police officer, the other one's an entrepreneur, and the other one actually just got back from a trip with the Harlem Globe Trotters, all that were educated in the city of Harrisburg. Not just speaking specifically for people in my family, but I know tons of my friends that are doing well. I know the school district has issues, and we're, and to the extent that the, that as us as individuals, I'll speak for myself, as an individual can work with our, our young people, I'm willing to do that, I do that now. There's tons of programs in the city of Harrisburg, not that are run by the city, but nonprofit groups that are doing great work with the, with, with the kids. Do we need more? Absolutely. Do we have folks that are struggling in the city of Harrisburg? Absolutely. I think you'll find that in any city across this country, that there are issues dealing with, you know, crime and blight, and, and folks that are in substandard housing that we need to, to work through. But I believe in this community, I'm, I'm a product of it, and to, 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 to anyone in the community, my, my door's always open, my email address is, is available, I'll give my cellphone number out to anyone that wants to talk and work to see how we can improve the city of Harrisburg. I, I, I know we're, we're dealing with some very difficult times, but I, I don't want it to be perceived as people aren't willing to do anything, because I know a lot of folks that are working really hard in community groups to try to improve day-to-day life for our, our residents, especially our, our young people. So for, for those, I, I'm, and I'm willing to stay after and talk to anybody that wants to talk, and, and work to find ways to improve the conditions, not just for, for our residents, and especially for our young people. And I know that, you know, we have, you know, a diverse group of people in the city of Harrisburg, so, but anybody that's willing to work and try to find ways, willing to do that. But I, I still believe that, you know, while there are issues, that the, the city does put out some, some very bright people. I mean, we, we, we lost one gentleman who was on council, who went through the Harrisburg School District and just got a, a great job offer. I mean, I could, I could speak for days, for, you know, even for kids that are just graduating, that are going on to Penn State, and Harvard, and Yale, et cetera. So this, as, as difficult as times can be, I still believe in the strength of Harrisburg City and our residents. Thank you.
Anyone else, new business?
For your class, two things just wanted to do. One, as many people know today, was a House hearing over at the Capitol, and the mayor had a chance to present before House Committee hearing on a House bill that would consider extending our ability to use the LST tax to help close some of the budget shortcomings, and hopefully essentially exit Act forty-seven. This has been a tenuous process to be able to do. We all know in some ways that here we are in the city, and the Capitol seems like David and Goliath and type of battle sometimes, to be able to have those types of conversations. But without rehashing everything that went on with, with the hearing, I just wanted to commend you, the mayor, because I think that you did a great job representing and outlining the issues that we are facing. And I think under scrutiny of sometimes, I think, some more intense questioning, and sometimes some questioning that seemed lacking in complete knowledge of the issues at hand, I think you handled yourself well under that kind of glaring spotlight for a hearing that lasted over two hours. And I, I know that sometimes it gives you grief on some things too, but I think that it was a good day for the city.